Good morning. Good morning, this is Pastor John. I hope you're having a great day. One thing we wanted to do was to just take a week when we have a lot of time and we have a lot of strange situations going on, just to offer the parents a little Bible study. So I'm going to be doing a Bible study Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I hope you guys enjoy it. And I realize I'm doing this at 10 o'clock in the morning, and a lot of parents are working at 10 o'clock in the morning, so that's fine. I don't mind if there's not a lot of live viewers. My goal really is to get these recorded, and then parents can watch them whenever they have time, whenever they have a free minute or two. I'm really excited. This is something I've been thinking through and writing about for at least a few months now. And I'm really excited to have a chance to share this with you guys. So thank you for watching. Thank you for tuning in live if you are. Good morning Heather, it's good to see you too. Actually, can you see me? I guess I'm sharing my screen. I have a little PowerPoint, so I wanted to share the screen for that. I'll give another minute or two. I hope everyone is doing well. I had a really good weekend. It's really fun to make memories with my kids during this time. And I think, I think for a lot of us, our kids are going to have more good memories than bad. And I guess that's easier to say when your kids are young, but my kids are just having fun. Playing, playing in the yard, playing board games, cooking, you know, all the fun stuff that you like to do when you can make time. Good morning Angelo, it's good to see you. Thanks for tuning in. So my goal with this study this week is to, to help us realize where the idea for family came from, where we see it in the Bible, and really what the Bible wants from us as parents. So if, how would the Bible measure my success or your success as a parent? So that's my hope today. All right, let me get my PowerPoint up. I think if I click this, let's see. Someone who's on live, can you see my screen? Is it coming through okay? Give me a little comment there if you can. I'm not going to go through PowerPoint if I'm the only one watching it. Let's see, yep. Well, I'll go by faith because I think it's working, so we'll go with that. All right. Well, let's get started. Review slideshow. All right, I guess the best would be if there is a way to see my face as well as the PowerPoint. I don't know a way to do that on Facebook. Maybe I could resort, record a Zoom call, but that seems a little over the top. Let's start with praying, and then we're going to get into the Bible. "God, thank you for your word. Thank you that you don't leave us to try to make up parenting as best we can. Thank you that you have given us instructions and guidance and encouragement so that we can be the parents you want us to be, and that's what we want, God. I pray that this week, or whenever parents watch these videos and go through this study, I pray that we would be the parents you want us to be, and that our families would be molded and shaped into what you want them to be, God. We want to be pleasing to you. So I pray that you would help me, and I pray that you would make this a blessing to other people. In Jesus' name, amen." Okay guys, on this first day, we're going to look at the first three chapters of Genesis. Genesis 1 through 3. Now I realize Pastor Bill has already covered this in his Genesis Bible study, so we're not going to go through verse by verse or try to get the big picture meaning. Rather, I want us to look at, what do we learn about the family in these chapters? What is God saying to parents specifically from Genesis 1, 2, and 3? So that's what we're going to try to do today, is what can we learn about families from these chapters? So Genesis 1, we know the story. God created everything in six days, he rested on the seventh. And Pastor Bill did a great job of going through that verse by verse. I'll just point out a couple things. In chapter 1 of Genesis, God's, it says, "God saw that it was good seven times." If you read, if you read in the Hebrew, the number 7 and multiples of 7 show up all over Genesis chapter 1. It's 7, 14, 21. It's really neat. The way that the author wrote the chapter emphasizes the point he's making, how God brings order from chaos and creates structure just the way he wants it. But for our purposes, we need to remember, God said, "It is good seven times." He saw it was good seven times. The other thing to point out from Genesis 1, and Pastor Bill did a great job of pointing this out already, I'll just repeat him, is that God created people separate and more special and different than he created everything else. So you look through Genesis chapter 1, you see, God kind of spoke, "Let there be light, let there be an expanse," and it happened. Well, before God created people, he stopped and said, "Let us make man in our image, in our likeness." And so we see that God stops before he creates people, and then, it's really neat, the first bit of poetry in the Bible is Genesis chapter 1, verse 27. "So God created man in his own image; in the image of God he created him; male and female he created them." So the first bit of poetry we read in the Bible is when God created people. And he made people out of everything God made. God made only people in his image and his likeness. Animals don't have that, trees don't have that, planets don't have that. Only people have the blessing of being made in a way like God, so that we could represent him, we could rule over the earth that he made, and we could be, we could spread his image and spread his knowledge and spread his praise through the entire earth. So God, God saw that it was good seven times in Genesis chapter 1, and God made people in his own image. And by the way, this means that every single person, and we'll get more into this in a minute, every single person has value and worth completely apart from what they do. Completely separate from what they bring to the table, they have worth and value and meaning because God made them in his own image. All right, so that's all we need from Genesis chapter 1. We saw that God created man, he created mankind, he created people to be special. And we also saw, everything is good. So let's move to Genesis chapter 2. And I want us to read verses 5 through 9. So Genesis chapter 2, verses 5 through 9. Again, Pastor Bill covered this chapter, that's why I'm going to skip around a little bit and not read the whole chapter. But I want us to see, this is the story of how God created the family. So in chapter 1, God created people, and chapter 2, God created the family. So I'm going to start in verse 5 and read through verse 9. "When no bush of the field was yet in the land, and no small plant of the field had yet sprung up; for the Lord God had not caused it to rain on the land, and there was no man to work the ground; and a mist was going up from the land, and was watering the whole face of the ground. Then the Lord God formed the man of dust from the ground, and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life; and the man became a living creature. And the Lord God planted a garden in Eden, in the east; and there he put the man whom he had formed. And out of the ground the Lord God made to spring up every tree that is pleasant to the sight and good for food. The tree of life was in the midst of the garden, and the tree of the knowledge of good and evil." Okay, so we see in chapter 2, we see a more intimate picture of how God created the first man, Adam. And I want to hone in on verse 7, and really one word from verse 7. It says, "Then the Lord God formed the man from the dust of the ground." That word "form" there is the Hebrew word yat-zar. And I'm going to get on a hobby horse for a minute, but we see this verse in a couple of, in many other places, and it's, it means like, like a potter shaping clay. So picture a potter with a lump of clay, "And with great care, and great attention, and great skill, he molds this clay into something beautiful and useful." That's what God did to form, to yat-zar, the first man. I'm going to read a couple other verses where that word is found. Isaiah chapter 45, verse 9. "It says, 'Woe to him who strives with him who formed him, a pot among earth and pots.' Does the clay say to him who forms it, 'What are you making, or your work has no handles?'" So again, like a potter with clay, taking great care and skill and attention to form something just the way he wants it. And finally, I'll look at Jeremiah chapter 1, verse 5. And Jeremiah, God is speaking here. "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you; and before you were born, I consecrated you; I appointed you a prophet to the nations." So just like God took great care and attention and skill to form Adam, he does the same thing with every single human today. So every person that's alive, every person that's been born, frankly, every person that's not been born, was formed with careful attention, with great skill by God. There are some, this is, I'll get on my soapbox for a minute, there are some who try to hold to evolution and believe the Bible at the same time. It's called theistic evolution, and they like to say that the Bible supports evolution, and you can believe in both, they'll say. But verses like this, I think, cut against that. I don't see how you can read a verse that says, "God took such great care and attention to form each person," and then say, what that really means is there is this process where stuff kind of randomly happens, and God watches it. Well, that's not what we read in the Bible. We read that God, with each person, God knits them together in the womb. So enough talk about evolution, I suppose, but what that means for our families, and I said this before, is that every person, every member of our family has great worth and great value. If we're not careful, we can praise our kids only when they do something really well. Now what I mean is, you know, your kid brings home a report card, straight A's, and you say, "Great job, that was awesome." And that is, it's okay to praise them for good work. But if that's the only thing we praise them for, or let's say they score the winning basket on their basketball team, or they nail the piano recital, or whatever it is that your kid is doing, is actively engaged in, we need to make sure we're praising them and for their, for a good job. But also, we need to remind them that their value is not found in making the grade. Their value is not found in winning the game. Their value is found in the fact that God formed them and shaped them carefully, just the way he wanted them to be, and that he made them in his own image. And we need kids who have that kind of deep roots, and they know where they come from, which is God, and they know who they are, which is a creature made in God's image, one that he greatly loves and cares for. So we can get out of this performance mentality that just permeates America and really the world. You know, the world sees our value as, what do you do? What do you bring? What do you produce? That's how you're valued. Whereas God says, in the word of God, it says, that we are valued because God made us. Completely separate, you know, so when your kid misses the shot, it's okay. You're made in the image of God, and your value doesn't change. When your kid makes a B, or a D, or whatever is kind of the, the failing grade for your kid, you can say, "Hey, it's okay. God made you in his image. Nothing changed about that." All right, so God put great care into making Adam, into forming Adam. Let's get back to the story. I got off on my hobby horse a little bit there. I apologize. "And then God prepared the perfect place for Adam, the garden of Eden, filled with trees and rivers and minerals, and Pastor Bill talked about that, did a great job, I won't cover that again. But I want you to see just the care that God put into making Adam, and then two, putting Adam in the perfect place." So I want to read verses 15 to 20 of Genesis chapter 2. So this is Genesis chapter 2, verses 15 to 20. I realize I'm skipping some verses, but I am, I'm okay with that because Pastor Bill covered it. So verse 15. "The Lord God took the man and put him in the garden of Eden to work it and keep it. And the Lord God commanded the man, saying, 'You may surely eat of every tree of the garden; but of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil you shall not eat; for in the day that you eat it, you shall surely die.'" "Then the Lord God said, 'It is not good that the man should be alone. I will make him a helper, fit for him, or suitable to him.'" "Now out of the ground the Lord God had formed every beast of the field, and every bird of the heavens, and brought them to the man, to see what he would call them; and whatever the man called, every living creature, thou wast its name. The man gave names to all livestock, and to the birds of the heavens, and to every beast of the field; but for Adam there was not found a helper fit for him." Okay, so God puts Adam in the garden. And it's interesting, he gives Adam the command, "Don't eat from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil." Now, when you realize later, when Eve does eat from it, there's not a record of God telling Eve this command. What we see is God told Adam, and expected Adam to tell Eve. So we have a, a, let's see, a pre-fall, can I say that? A pre-fall, a perfect world example of husbands and fathers leading their families. That's still true today. That's all I'll say about that. So God gave Adam the one command, he generously provided every other tree, and then he says something shocking. It absolutely floors me when I read this, verse 18. "The Lord God said, 'It is not good.'" Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold up. This is pre-fall, this is before sin. Do you remember in Genesis 1, where God saw that it was good seven times? Well, now, for the first time in recorded history, something is not good. And what is not good is for the man to be alone. He needed community, he needed companionship, he needed help, he needed accountability. And it was not good for him to be alone. I think the same thing is true today. It's not good for us to be alone either, right? My wife provides great accountability for me, even when she doesn't know it. The other day, I guess I'll say this to the world, the other day I was hungry, and I was like, "Man, I really feel like eating some Doritos." So I went to the kitchen, and my wife's there. You know what I did? I ate a banana. I wasn't about to open up a bag of chips when she's standing there. Now, she doesn't nag me, she wouldn't care. But just the fact that someone was there, like, "Well, I'm going to be seen. I'm going to try to be healthy, I'm going to try to make a better choice because someone's in the room with me." So I'm really thankful for my wife, who provides that accountability just by being in the room. She takes her health very seriously, and is a good example for me to take mine more seriously. But anyway, it's still good today, right? Are we not tempted to sin more when we're alone? Are we not more likely to do something stupid, or even just to waste time, which is a sin, when we're alone? So the same is true for us today. So God said, "It's not good for the man to be alone. I will make a helper suitable for him." I hesitate to say this, but could we say the first problem was that the man was alone? At least the first thing that was not good, and if something's not good, doesn't that mean it's a problem you kind of have to fix? That's how I look at it. So what God does, he takes all the animals, and he does something really neat, creates the animals. Every single animal, think of how many thousands, millions, I don't know, types of animals there are, and different species, and different subspecies, and phylums, and genus, and all this crazy stuff. God brings every animal to Adam. Adam sees every animal, Adam names every animal. And after that entire process, giving out name after name, seeing animal after animal, there's not found a helper suitable for Adam. Now God's not surprised by this, and I think God did this so that Adam would feel his need, so that when God provided the solution, Adam would appreciate it the way he should, and he certainly does. So let's read verses 21 through 25. I'm going to read chapter 2 of Genesis, verses 21 to 25, and we'll see how God solves the problem of the man being alone. "So the Lord God caused a deep sleep to fall upon the man; and while he slept, took one of his ribs and closed up its place with flesh; and the rib that the Lord God had taken from the man, he made into a woman, and brought her to the man. Then the man said, 'This at last is bone of my bones, and flesh of my flesh; she shall be called woman, because she was taken out of man. Therefore a man shall leave his father and his mother, and hold fast to his wife; and they shall become one flesh; and the man and his wife were both naked, and were not ashamed.'" So just like God did with the animals, where God creates, God brings, Adam sees, Adam names, we have the same process with the woman. God creates the woman, God brings the woman to Adam, Adam sees the woman, and Adam names the woman. "She shall be called woman, for she was taken out of man." But this encounter is so much different and so much better than the encounters with the animals. How do I know that? Because the man instantly leaps into poetry. The first poetry that man did was when he saw a woman. He said, "This at last is bone of my bones, and flesh of my flesh; she shall be called woman, because she was taken out of man. She shall be called Ishah, for she was taken out of Ish," if you want to do the Hebrew there. Remember when we saw poetry in Genesis chapter 1, when God created people? Here, we see poetry when God created the family. So we see a wonderful story, a wonderful picture, a true story, a true picture, I might add, of God creating the family and man's response when he sees woman. And the story pauses here, and the author gives commentary in verse 24. Do you notice that? Verse 24 is not, "Adam did this, Eve did this, God did this," no, the story, the pauses. And instead, we get a commentary. And he says, "Therefore a man shall leave his mother and father, and hold fast to his wife." So we see that this story is the foundation for marriage for everybody. The reason we get married today is because of this story. This was God's provision, and it's still God's provision today. So what can we learn from Genesis chapter 2? I think we learn a lot. Number one, the family is God's idea. So we didn't make it up. It wasn't that someone in the medieval ages said, "Hey, let's try something called marriage." No, marriage has been around from the beginning, and it was God who designed marriage and provided marriage for us. Now, the second thing we learn, the family bears responsibility before God. That's because God made marriage, and God initiated marriage, and we have to do marriage God's way. And we have to do the family God's way. So if it were just something that we made up, maybe we could play with it, tinker with it, decide what we want to call family and what we don't, but we don't have that option because God made the family. And when God makes it, you have to do it His way. So the family is God's idea, the family bears responsibility before God. And number three, the family is the building block of society. The very first human institution is the family. Before any kind of government, before any kind of law enforcement, before any type of club, or anything else, there was the family. And so the family is the most important building block of society. Like I said, if you want a strong nation, you have to have strong families. And I'll say that many of the problems in our country today are results of the problems of the families in our country. Or to put it another way, our nation has problems because the families of our nation have problems. Most of the problems I think we're dealing with start with families. If we had healthy families, we wouldn't have to deal with the national problems we do many times. So the, all the big picture, in short, from Genesis 2, we learn, the family is very important. It's not a secondary institution, it's not a, an afterthought. It's the most important institution in the world. Now I said that, some of you may be thinking, "Well, what about the church?" Well, isn't it so interesting and so really profound that when God made the church, he made it a family? Right? Isn't that why we call each other brothers and sisters? Isn't that why the Bible says that Jesus is the firstborn among many brothers and sisters? You could say, the Greek there is for both. So when God made the church, he made it a family. So when we say family is most important, I don't think we have to necessarily separate church family from our nuclear families, or from our biological families, however, how am I supposed to say that? I don't know. The people that live in our house versus the church family, we're all family. Now, as parents, we bear special responsibility to parent our children well. No one else can do that for us, only we can do that. But we should have on some level the same amount of care, concern for our church family as well. So I can certainly say the family is the most important institution in the world, both church and our nuclear family. I'll stick with nuclear, that sounds good. All right, real quick, we're going to go to Genesis 3. I hope I don't take too much time. The first, this first one, I'm trying to cover a lot of ground. I promise the next few ones will be shorter and a little simpler. We've learned the family is important. We're going to learn that family life is hard. So unfortunately, Adam and Eve sinned. We know the story, right? Pastor Bill covered it again, Genesis 3. I'm not going to cover everything. "But Satan came to the garden, tempted and lied to Eve. Eve ate the fruit of the forbidden tree, the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. She then gave it to Adam, and he ate it too. They both sinned, they disobeyed God. And when they did, sin entered them, and sin entered the world." And I want us to look at verses 14 to 19, and see how sin distorted the family. And we'll see how sin made family life difficult. So again, we're looking at it and saying, what can we learn about families? If you want to learn more in general, I recommend Pastor Bill's teaching. I watched it the other day and did a great job. So I'm going to read verses 14 to 19. And we're just going to look at what God says to the woman, and what God says to the man. That's all I'm interested in this chapter right now. So let's start with verse 15. I think I said 14, I'm going to start, sorry. I'm going to start in verse 16. I wrote down the wrong verse. So I'm just going to read verse 16 and 17 of Genesis chapter 3. Now God has confronted the serpent Eve and Adam, and God is giving out their punishments for their sins, the judgments for their sins. In verse 16, it says, "To the woman, God said, 'I will surely multiply your pain in childbearing. In pain you shall bring forth children; your desire shall be for your husband, and he shall rule over you.'" Let's stop there. So we see in verse 16, Eve's punishments, and there's two, right? There's pain in childbearing, and there's a desire for her husband, and he will rule over you. I want you to notice that both of these punishments hit right at Eve's family relationships. Her role as a mother is negatively affected because there will be pain in childbearing. Her role as a wife will be negatively affected because her desire will be for her husband, and he will rule over her. And so when God punished Eve, when God judged Eve, it was God punishing her in the midst of her family responsibilities. And so we see the family, just like family is most important, just like family is the building block, the family was most affected by sin. So God didn't take Eve and said, aside, and say, "Hey, I'm going to make your left ear deaf because you sinned." No, he, he gave her a punishment within her family responsibilities. So her role as a mother is made more difficult, her role as a wife was made more difficult. So I want you to see how the family was affected by the sin. Okay, what is Eve's desire? Her desire is for her husband, and he will rule over her. What does that mean? Let's do this real quick. There are some people who say that this means that Eve will desire love and care and affection from her husband, but that he will harshly rule over her. I, I don't think that's right, and I'll tell you why. You can look on the screen right here. I think Eve's desire is sinful. I think this new desire for her husband is sinful, and I'll tell you why. We see the same words, the same phrasing in Genesis 4 with Adam and Eve's children. We remember the story of Cain and Abel, right? Cain and Abel offer sacrifices to God. God accepts only Abel's offering, does not accept Cain's offering. Cain becomes angry, and God warns him to not let sin master him. And God says, Genesis 4:7, "Sin is crouching at the door; its desire is for you, but you must rule over it." Sin's desire for Cain was to master Cain, was to dominate Cain, was to rule over Cain. Now, taking the same words and the same phrasing back to Genesis three, going back a few verses, we see that Eve's desire was to dominate Adam, to master Adam. Her desire was now to rule her family. Now you might say, why is that such a bad thing? Well, remember when we went to Genesis two and we saw a picture of how Adam was supposed to be the one leading his family? How God commanded Adam to not eat of the tree? And God expected Adam to lead his wife, to protect her, to guide her. So we see that this new, this new desire of Eve is a sinful desire to dominate her husband. I don't think that, and it says, he will rule over her. I don't think that necessarily means it's going to be a harsh rule. I don't think that means it's going to be a sinful domination. I think it just means that God made, um, husbands to lead their wives. God made fathers to lead the family. That's just how it is. That's how God wanted it. So we see that, again, we see that Eve's desire was sinful. So her role as a mother was made more difficult. Her role as a wife was made more difficult. Family life just got more difficult. So let's read, um, chapter three, verse seventeen. And let's see what, verse through eighteen, and we'll see what God says to Adam. So let's look at Adam's punishment real quick. And to Adam, God said, because you have listened to the voice of your wife and have eaten of the tree of which I commanded you, you shall not eat of it. Cursed is the ground because of you. Through painful toil, you will eat food from it all the days of your life. It will produce thorns and thistles for you and you will eat the plants of the field. By the sweat of your brow, you will eat your food until you return to the ground. Since from it you were taken, for dust you are and to dust you shall return. Adam's role was to lead and provide for his family. Well, it just got a lot harder to provide for his family. Because now, when he works to provide, there's going to be thorns and thistles. He's going to have to sweat. He's going to have to work. It's going to be hard and difficult and frustrating and tiresome for Adam to provide for his family. So we see how the fall, or how these effects of sin directly impacted family roles and family life. God didn't just take individuals and punish them for their sin. And his wisdom and his justice, his punishments are directed toward the family. And we experience these most, we experience the problems that sin brings the most within our families. It's really hard to raise children. It's hard, I'm told, to bear children. I've never done it. It's hard for husbands to work and to provide for their families. So I, I think there is a positive here though, is that sin didn't take away the family. Sin didn't take away family roles, right? Just like before the fall, men still lead, men still provide. Just like before the fall, women still bear children, women still support their husbands. So we see the family survived. We see that God's desires for family before the fall are the same after the fall. So what we see, what sin did was it didn't take away these good things. It made it more difficult to keep doing these good things. So it brings frustration and it brings extra work to make it happen. But we can still today praise the Lord, live out God's ideal for the family. Now, I think it's really neat. I need to hurry up, but I, I want to say this. It's really neat how God, he promised in verse fifteen to send the Savior. You can listen to Pastor Bill's message for that as study. And the way he said it was, um, Eve's offspring, her seed. And so it's really neat how God provided salvation for all families through the family. God sent his Savior through a family to save all families. And so just like family was there before the fall, just like family is negatively affected by the fall, so salvation comes for families through the family. I think there's something to the point that, I want to be careful I don't overspeak. God sent his son, I mean, son, father, that, those are family terms, right? So God sent his son so that he could have many more sons and daughters. Now, I'm going to overstate it a bit and I kind of hesitate to even say this to the world. But could, could we, could we say, uh, God sent family, his son, so that he could create a new family of everyone that comes to Jesus, that believes in Jesus? So I just think it's really neat when you see the first three chapters of Genesis and really the whole Bible through the lens of family, there's a lot there. Family is really important. Okay. Well, what did we learn from Genesis three? I'll get off my hobby horse and I'll get back onto solid theological ground. I got out on a branch there. Family life is difficult because of sin. Okay. Number two, our neutral gear is towards sin. We all have sin in us and we're bent towards sin, which means if we're not actively fighting against it, we're going to lean into sin. We're going to slide into sin, I think is a good way to put it. So we must put forth active effort, intentional effort to fight against our natural tendencies to serve our families well. Passive parenting is not an option. Passive parenting leads to sin because our family members, us included, are sinners. So we have to do something to swim against the current, to push against the tide, to walk uphill rather than slide downhill. We have to put active, intentional effort to fight against this if we're going to lead and serve our families well. All right. I have one more slide. Um, we have two things to learn. We've learned two things here. The family is really important. We learned that from Genesis one and two. And number two, we learned that raising our families is difficult and requires active effort. We learned that in Genesis, chapter three. So I have a couple of questions for you. Um, you can talk about this with your spouse if you're married or think about it if you're single. Uh, for number one, the family is important, really important. Is your family life a priority? And what ways do you prioritize time with your family? And you can really tell your priorities, not by what you say yes to, but by what you say no to. We guard our priorities by saying no to other things. So what have you said no to recently? Maybe before COVID, right? What have you said no to, to, to guard time with family, to protect your time with your family? And, um, how can you do that better? We're going to talk about that in the next few days here. Number two, since raising our families requires active effort and is difficult, how are you parents putting forth intentional effort to raise your children well? Again, if you're passive, you're sliding towards sin. That's true of us individually. It's true of us as families. So what are you doing, um, to fight against that? It may be you pray together, you read the Bible together. That's great. Um, the, the goal for the rest of this week, the rest of this session is to give you some guidance and give you some examples of how you can put forth active effort. So, but I want you to see the need today, that family is important. The problem is we slide towards sin, so we must be doing something. And we're going to talk about that something the next several weeks. Oh, sorry, not several weeks, several days. I'm not doing this for a month. Sorry, Pastor Bill. He can do it for a month. He's really good at that. All right. Well, guys, that's all I have for today. Let's see if I stop sharing.